Yeah, here we go. I don't even know if they all, uh... I also think like we have to re-angle it all back. So anyway, anyway, I'm going to the motion. Okay, the first thing we're... We don't need to capture it off. I wish we almost had like a little... A little thing for like course and stuff.
There's no link on here.
Just getting put on to loop.
Oh, I'm on there. Here we go. Hi.
Hi.
Well, I have a success story for you, Gary.
Okay, you do.
But I'm there, isn't it? Cindy Van Leeve entered the waiting room.
Oh, yeah.
Care to open me if I don't care. I'm leaving. You look at a dress jacket as well.
Oh, so I guess we can do that, but, uh, in the audio's on.
We can mute it right now.
Hold up here. So make sure you unmute it.
You don't tell me what goes on between us four.
I'm trying to prevent tripping hazards.
Oh, yeah.
That would have been me that didn't know, guys.
Can we turn our zoom on or we just...
Did you take the mute off?
Yeah.
All right, seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for April 5th to order. First order of business, the agenda, are there any deletions, additions?
Assuming nobody has, or you didn't.
Yeah, I'm a little confused just in that I thought we were presenting our council templates for March at this meeting.
No.
That's what we were told. That's what we were told in March that April 5th we would be doing it.
Okay, it'll be on the next one.
At the end of the month?
No, Carl, next week.
Okay, okay. Cause I know in the notes and I had gone back to double check and it said for this meeting only, we would do it on April 5th, but, okay.
There is one, 3.6, I'd like to add in voluntary appreciation. Acknowledgement there. That's all I have. If anybody have anything else?
No, I'd move to a dump each investment.
Thank you, Corey. All in favor? That is carried. Okay. Keep in this minutes for March the 8th, 15th, 20th, and 22nd. If you've got a chance, any corrections, any additions, errors, anybody want to raise anything?
On page seven, it says Counselor Tracy Miller adjourned the meeting. So I'm guessing I probably started it and he finished.
Well, you were kind of going back and forth.
So I'm guessing it was John does.
That changed already.
Adjourned.
Well, just the things that I brought forth and they're still on here, so.
I have one more.
You have what?
I have one more.
No, I sent the new council package, but it'll change.
Okay, cause this is my old one. Okay, okay.
I have one more question regarding the page 15. July 5th being the Cal and 19th being regular, are those dates correct? Cause I thought it was the second Tuesday and fourth Thursday.
We're gonna discuss that later on.
Those are proposed dates from March.
Uh, we're discussing the minute.
Sure, we can change any of them, but we'll discuss that on your...
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, 3.3.
All right.
Those are suggestions for your discussion and determination.
Okay, sorry.
Anything else, something else? Not that we're working to adopt all those minutes. Move to about minutes from March 8th, 2022 to March 22nd of 2022. All in favor? Uh, next item, 3.1, policy for the line of credit to Arizona, if he makes a piece of that policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the last regular council meeting, council directive is to report the policy that substantiated the ATB borrowing bylaw. And as well, third reading of the bylaw requires consideration by council, such as a reminder. This is the first governance policy for this line of credit. We looked really hard to find, to find something that might have been in the past. And, uh, and because you have ultimate authority for policies that require any financial or budgetary management by administration. So we're starting a new policy numbering system so that you know, looking in the binder, that if it's Duff Finance, if your policy is anything to do with money or anything to do with personnel when it comes to HR issues, or I don't mean, I don't mean wages, salary, but when you're, when you're passing the budget, if, uh, or raises or anything like that, that will be part of your purview as well. So we, of course, we recommend passage of the financial policy within the administrative amendments issued, and of course through reading of the bylaw. So in the policy, you'll see a policy statement, and of course, our cross-reference is by law 202202. This policy directly relates to this line of credit. And under the Municipal Government Act, Section 248. So the policy statement talks about the good governance on behalf of use of its resources to ensure sound financial stewardship, accountability, and transparency. The, you approve the budget and the chief administrative officer and chief financial officer administer the budget. And of course, with the budget policy and approved budget. Yeah, I got that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I got it, I'm sorry. The officers, of course, we have to practice due diligence of cash flow management such as collecting receivables and payable, and payments of invoice in timely manner. But on occasion, emergencies arise, payments during collection, cash flows can be temporarily limited. So the purpose of this was to be compliant with the applicable legislation, to have an efficient and responsive delivery of the programs and services, proper approval expenditures incurred by the municipal in overall budget management. Put in a definition section there, and of course, the guidelines. So we each, each year we pass this borrowing bylaw to enact the line of credit over the treasury branch. It has historical use and been used for emergency expenditures such as infrastructure, cash handling shortages. And the line of credit is reported monthly in the variance reports to council, which you'll be getting with the new budget. And must be cleared by the end of each fiscal year. The CFO and the CAO have the authority to approve it to extend the line of credit without council approval. However, all reporting must take place within the variance reporting to council each month. And so that's where your oversight is, is in the variance report. At any point outside the annual budget process, council or the CEO or CFO may approve on budgeted emergent projects or cost adjustments, as well as appropriate funding, but these will be considered unbudgeted approvals within the line of credit unless the criteria for a budget amendment is met. And budget amendments will have to come under your budget policy, which you don't have yet. We couldn't find one of those either, and that's okay. So the CFO and CAO have the authority to recategorize incurred expenditures and the corresponding funding between operating and capital, and to use the bylaw approved line of credit based on appropriate accounting treatment to comply with the public sector accounting standard and the town authorities' policies. So we're building policies into this one, and you can see we have two policies to build. In other words, donations policy, and that will be, you can see, Gov. D O N O one. And then regular reporting accordance with financial reporting policy of Duff's in O two. So we have to build those policies. And in the bottom, you have a policy record of when did you approve it? Next review date will be October 15th, 2022, in line with the 2023 budget. When did we review it last? Administrative review, and of course, resolution number. So I know Counselor Gilbert asked to put a cap on it, and Counselor Miller reminded me of that tonight. We chose not to unless we want to have a discussion about it. Simply because, first of all, we can't incur a deficit. We may incur a deficit with this budget this year. Second, we may have emergent expenses. Third, in this last payment schedule, we had over a hundred thousand worth of bills to pay. Some of them were four or five months old that had been paid, so that puts us into a crunch. So we're three months away from taxes. We have some recreation funding coming, and we'll discuss that at the county next week with, with the 60,000 from the, uh, from the county, plus our first payment of recreation comes in in July from, from the county. So cash flow becomes fluid again, right? And CAO Van Leeve, do you have any, anything to add?
Right now, I mean, as of today, there was $65,000 in the operating account. I have payroll this week, I have, you know, payable that has to be paid, so.
I was just gonna wrap when we did the first reading, they're like, I understand that, yes, this is a real thing, and having operating line credit is my concern then. And so if, if it's there, sometimes it encourages people to not be as aware and diligent of where we are cash flow wise. And yes, I understand some bills are big and large and come at different times of the year than taxes, which is a huge revenue, or grants, which is a huge revenue. So like I say, I understand the need and reason to have the line of credit, but again, my concern was just having the, making sure that we're aware of when we're spending money on it so that we are confident that cash flow is being considered. So I guess in my, my thought here, just like under section two, it says all reporting must take place within the variance report. Uh, that's fine, yeah, the variance report should, should happen, but I guess, variance report or otherwise, I guess, what my thoughts and I intention was that when we're explicitly going into the line of credit for periods of time for, you know, a cash flow problem and to cost us money with an interest, having that kind of explicitly saved as a separate function, other than just saying, yeah, here's the budget, and here we are in the variance report, you know what I mean?
Agreed, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like, well, we can comment on where we are in the line of credit or cash flow every month.
Yeah, so I guess that was kind of my, my desire, at least, when I sent, you know, when I motioned to do this, I was having an explicit line of credit amount should be kind of spelled out separately and obviously.
Yeah, great.
Like I say, it's, I understand that, of course, it exists, and of course, our, our revenue doesn't line up with our expenditures, but we should all be aware, and future administrations and future councils are kind of forced to stay aware so we don't get back into a problem that we used to have.
Yes, 100%, so I guess my, yeah, my, um, my, I don't even know how to say this word, okay. My plan, that's the word. When I do the variance to report on like our cash flow standing too, right? So this is where our bank's sitting at, this is where we're, if we're in the line of credit or not, which hopefully we're not. Like, we're gonna be in, we're gonna, I think we're gonna be in it
Of course, yeah.
right away, but, but then, but yeah, every month, like just report, like here's the cash balances, that this is the balances, and then here's the variance reports about that.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, if you're the policy that really, it doesn't create that sense of demand for it, which is kind of what, again, I get that, fine, we're all on the same page here and right now in this room, but give it four years and it's new administration, new council, and it's just nice to get something kind of
So do you want to add under that number two, like including cash flow or cash balances?
Yeah, maybe some, like some sort of wording just to...
Yep, we could do that. Sorry, you have something?
So at the beginning, when you had stated that Jonathan had reminded you about a limit, are we, what you meant by that is, I'm not sure what you meant by that, but what I'm thinking in my head is, should at any point, like, there's no discretion for you guys other than the accountability, should there be a limit that has to be approved upon by us at any point in time?
Well, but at that point, if it is a budgeted expenditure, again, they, they have to operate within the budget that exists.
Yeah.
So it's not like things, oh, we just went in blue the whole million dollars on something silly. It has to be within the budget, but I guess my point is, even if something's within the budget, there has been times where people aren't mindful of cash flow and it costs us a bunch of money in interest just because somebody didn't think, hey, maybe we do that next month instead and save the $8,000 in interest it's going to incur by buying it this month. You know what I mean? That people sometimes, even though it's all within the budget, that budget's for the year, and you gotta kind of look at the bigger picture sometimes, and it doesn't always historically happen.
Could be prudent, or would we, as councils, have a statement available that we can review each?
Yeah, that's what the variance would be. It'll be like, it'll be the budget versus actual, and then you all, I'll have a separate one, cause normally the cash flow isn't included in the budget. I'll have a separate statement, and it shows cash balances, and then you'll see.
Yeah, typically the variance report is, what was the budgeted amount? And how are we comparing on what we actually spent or brought in?
Yeah.
But that doesn't tell me that, oh, gee, Chuck, great, we're all, everything's under budget, but we still somehow have no money on hand, right? So sometimes, yeah, the, the variance report doesn't really clarify that on its own.
Yeah, so we'll do the variance, and then we'll do a cash reporting, cash report, cash report too.
And then we can put notes in it in the cash reporting too, so you can see what some of that cash reporting is, if we need to use it, if it's not wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, like I say, it's gonna be a good practice for us to start.
Exactly. Okay, we can make a little, if, if council is amenable, we can put some language around include cash balances, like we'll, to the variance report, and notations on, uh, on the line of credits, what we've, we've had to go into it, or I'll figure out the language, if that's all right.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same board intent wise, it's just, yeah.
I guess, yeah, we've got to have better language.
We just want that motion to, uh, certain, so you would accept this, right?
That would be awesome.
So can I get a motion to accept this policy amended to include the report for the variance as stated earlier here? That's what you're looking for?
I can move this report, or not a report.
We just want, we just want to approve the policy for the line of credit.
And with the amendment of including the cash balance to the variance report? Yes, that makes sense.
Perfect, thank you. All in favor?
And Mr. Mayor, then the next part of this is the borrowing bylaw has received two readings, and it is subject to third reading this evening in Council's view.
So just, I just want to find out, show you that the way that the NGA works, that when you're doing your bylaws, if you don't got there for the first and second reading, you can't vote on them. So we got those things.
I don't think so, but.
I believe so, that's what it is with the bylaws.
If you aren't there for a public hearing, you can't vote on a matter relating to whatever public hearing was held in regards to. But there was no public hearing perceived, there's public advertising.
Maybe I was hearing wrongly, but I, I thought that when you, when you approved first and the second, the councilors there have to be there, have to vote.
It's all in the news to me. As far as my take on it would go, would be the...
We'll get, uh, CFO to, well, my understanding that any, anytime by first and second, whoever was there voting on that there has to vote on the fourth one there. If somebody was not there for the first and second, they can't vote on the third.
Never heard this before in any way before.
Okay.
I read something similar to what you're saying, but I don't remember the details.
Like I say, if it's something that involved a public hearing, and you missed the public hearing portion, then you can't vote on the subsequent bylaw. If you were only present for part of a public hearing, then you may or may not vote on the subsequent bylaw. But otherwise...
What's that on the, when I was on the call meeting that day?
Yeah, you can call it a very good.
It would have been in here. That's why I didn't really browse here. I haven't memorized it yet. Only take 20 more readings.
Yes, from counsel, you were, you were here, Counselor Shelley, so that's a public hearing, you're right, Counselor Corey.
So that'll leave the first of a public hearing, probably.
Trouble carrying, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
All right, we're good to go.
Doesn't hurt to clarify.
Well, I don't have a reason to never own that for sure. Then you bring the CAO, and then I cry.
I talk quick.
I talk quick. There you go, go right to the bylaws, so. So the third reading, can I have a motion to accept the borrowing bylaw?
I move third reading, bylaw 1,002,03.
Okay, all in favor? 3.3. 3.3, discussion of future council dates. Reclamation. So really, we're just, we're just dropping one of the calls.
In April, we are, yes. And then in, uh, May, July, September, be a count regular, two meetings a month. Kind of strange because of the special budget meeting on the 24th.
And then, sorry, the dates for July were, there should be the 12th and the 26th.
Okay. And the thing is, like I say.
I don't know how that happens.
You can always go back. So, um, does anybody have any discussion?
We're sticking to July 12th and 26th?
Yeah.
Okay. No, everything else looks fine.
No more discussion then. I would, uh, obtain a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, council date as proposed. In the 10, 24th, June 14, 28th, July 5, 19.
Nope, July 12th and 26th.
August 9, 23rd, and 13, 27th. And after that, we will address it again. I think motion to accept the council date proposed from May 10, 24th, June 14, 28th, July 12, 26th, August 9, 23rd, September 13th to 27th.
No, and I can say that when we discussed the first time, I, I think we should do it every week still, but that's fine. If that's what everyone else wants to do, but it is. I'm tactically opposed.
Thank you. Uh, 3.4, Tellus Historical Home Move. So we've seen that, I guess they're getting rid of all the payphones. And I understand there's one in the hotel, I think, and the only one they're getting.
That is the last one.
So I, they're telling us that if we want it, we can work with them to get it. Um, otherwise, I guess we'll just, uh, they'll go to wherever it goes, the museum for payphones. So is there any question on the council? I see whether we, I don't know what we'll do with it.
I would expect maybe the historical society might want it. That would be neat to put it at the hall or something.
They would take it, hook it up. Well, yeah, there's nothing saying you gotta fuck it up.
It's just a display. It's, it's not a working phone. It will be dismantled.
For directions. I think it's just the old.
Have to go to the hotel and check it out.
It's, yes, the, just the.
Six acquaintances.
It's just a keepsake. They're gonna take it away or we can keep it as a keepsake.
I may, if you'll take it. Long as you can get it to you. Okay. So, uh, make the direct administration to get contact with Tellus and tell them that we would like to get it and do something with it.
That's correct understanding of it, right? That's the way I read it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor says that the organization within would like to keep the decommissioned payphone for display purposes. Uh, Tellus will be happy to work with us to ensure that it stays in the community as an acknowledgement of a shared piece of technology.
All right, can I have a motion to that effect?
I move to provide direction to administration to work with Tellus and the historical society to potentially relocate the display, decommissioned payphone accordingly.
So if that's worth a million dollars to end in five years.
I hope it is because I sound like an old rotary phone somewhere. If I can only imagine what that'll go for.
That's only dime stuck in it.
Maybe the hotel, like, uh, we've got first dibs. We do or the hotel.
The town does and you kind of, the historical society just got first dibs from, from the town.
I mean, I don't want, I don't want to create ways for the hotel. They want, I all think. They might want to keep it at the. We'll figure it out.
These are discussions, I guess, that, yeah, can be had.
Uh, 3.5, proclamation for Rural Health Week. May 35th to June 3rd is Alberta Rural Health Week. And, uh, I guess in the past, if you do a big experience, we do a proclamation and, uh, we assign that proclamation, even if there's any, um, way against it. Do you need a motion to that?
Yes, sir. I do need a motion and to be able to put it in the target as a proclamation in our, and we'll put it on the website.
Okay.
Do you need that motion, sir?
Motion to, to save a, a third, two thirds, Alberta Health, Rural Health Week and also put notice in the target newspaper. John, make a motion to.
That was from John Mussen.
Mr. Mayor, in all my years in council, that is the first motion I've ever heard like. And a few words.
Uh, the next item, 3.6, volunteer appreciation.
Again, uh, April 7th to 23rd is volunteer appreciation and we are in April. So I think it's critical that we recognize it somehow. Um, I don't know if you want to make a proclamation for that as well. At minimum, I'd like to see something, uh, put into the target and on the whiteboard.
Used to be a big deal. We used to have a big celebration, didn't we not, for all of our volunteers in the community? Like a entertainment and a meal and stuff like that.
Yeah, and understandably for the last two years it's been COVID and nothing is really operated as usual. Um, I know we don't have a SCSS person in place yet. Um, if maybe, I know there's a grant available. I don't know what the amount is. If you want me to try to pursue it before the SCSS person gets in place, I can try to do that or possibly, I don't know, if Carol is available to pursue.
I can help you a little bit tonight, yeah, because you're saying you've done a great job.
Okay. I have all sorts of little thoughts and ideas. And so whatever the amount might be, you know, we can pursue making something happen. And sadly, uh, the 2021 grant money, well, not sadly, sadly, but it got spent on a metal sign that is standing covered in this building somewhere. That's not been erected anywhere and it's a year old and it's not been put up somewhere. And so that needs to be put up and we need to recognize 2022. That's my concern.
All right, I can add to that a little bit. Um, we have a, a staff member that is researching the grant and we have a week or two to apply for it. The grant is a thousand dollars. So, uh, she would be writing the grant. And then we have till May 31st to use it. Um, so what we're thinking potentially is at the end of May, having a picnic in Taylor Park and, uh, look for sponsorship. The grant can't be used for food or beverage.
Cannot, nope.
So it has to be used for volunteer appreciation. So we're, we're trying to think of something nice that every volunteer would get that is not, that is very appropriate because, um, I guess from my experience, I used to have for 10 years, 100 volunteers that worked for me in the police service and it's really important to recognize them. And, uh, so our staff member and the new SCSS, uh, person with even help from yourself, Councilor Tracy, whoever, uh, they're, they're, sorry, they will be putting their heads together so we can call a bit of a, a thought meeting. Um, as for the sign that is sitting at the sign shop, I am going to, uh, being, you brought it up. Um, that sign was $73,000.
No, 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 not that sign. There's a difference.
Building.
Oh, it's in the back here. It's heavy. Sorry. Oh, I didn't even know that was for.
It's all packaged and it has never been opened yet. Nobody has even seen it.
Where would you like it?
Well, it was supposed to go at Taylor Park was the idea, but it needs to be mounted on a wall with a background. Whether it's color or it's black.
That's that one that looks like it's been seen, seen out and support, right? Then everyone, oh.
It wasn't your office, wasn't it?
Yeah. So it's metal. It's been laser cut. It's very heavy. I know that.
I tried it a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. So it needs to be situated somewhere that it's not going to tip over and so you can't just lean against the wall.
Sure. Or, or minutes there, we had, uh, didn't we decide something that we needed a frame for or something to add?
It just needs to be mounted against a, something solid. I believe there's bolt holes already cut. It just needs to be drilled in.
Was it supposed to go to Taylor Park or could we mount it direct to the room where people will see it on the wall?
Any meaning as long as it gets put up in this town somewhere that people see it.
You know, particular, I mean, there's some really nice spots for it in the rec center where everybody could see it right when they walk in.
So that's, uh, basically thank you to the volunteers of 2021.
Oh, wow. That's very nice. Okay.
So it's dated. That's why I'm getting concerned that it's getting.
I didn't know there's a date on it.
Yes.
Um, well, if you're amenable to it, I mean, there, there's room and structural in, in the rec center where everybody could, could see it. Or we can look at putting it, um, it would have to be mounted on posts, I would assume, and a, and a frame around it so that it would bend.
It won't bend. It's powder coated. It's ready for the elements or.
Okay. So was it, um, I'm just seeking to understand, was it destined for Taylor Park or was it destined for somewhere?
The idea at the time was, but I thought it was supposed to go on the mural wall. I don't see a space for it, so.
No, there isn't.
Somehow it got in.
Evil wall handle it. Wall of faith street. I'm like, is that German? I don't know.
That one's a tricky one.
Okay.
Um, I think at the complex would be great. Outdoor somewhere would be nice, but.
Oh, is it on Thursday? I'm thinking it is Friday. Okay. Well, we'll, if council's okay, we'll find a spot.
I have some ideas, but I don't want to bring them up right now, but, um, I can maybe bring them, you know, later dates for about that time.
Maybe we can, uh, if you want to do, uh, like we did with the other one for the, the ruraler week, uh, if you want to do a proclamation and moving through proclamation and target and then we can look at finding a spot for the sign.
Yeah, we could strike a bit of a little working committee because we do want to honor all the volunteers in, in town. And we thought maybe enough to our barbecue with the new fire pit and stuff that probably going to Taylor Park by the end of May. It'd be nice weather and send out invitations, um, for this year. I don't know. Uh, I don't just, I think we could accomplish that. I think it would be nice to do, but that's, we can form a working group for thoughts on that too. We're just throwing some ideas out there.
Another idea, I just quickly read it on the, uh, National Volunteer Appreciation Website, was to basically have a coffee party location, say at the hotel and that people stop by for a honorary coffee. And, um, that possibly there's an entertainer there and that's kind of a surprise that they didn't expect once they arrive for a coffee. So it doesn't have to be anything big, just stop in, stop by. Maybe there's somebody there playing the flute, who knows? So, um.
I could put down.
It doesn't have to be big, but I'm thinking if you need to spend money that's not on food or beverage, then, you know, you can go towards the entertainer at a location.
Um, Mr. Mayor and Council, would you, uh, would you grace us with your presence on this little working committee? Myself, so the team, Councilman.
All the time. Nate, at please.
Okay, we will, and, and Carol will discuss and, uh, with, uh, our staff member, Jesse, and, uh, the new SCSS person that, uh, hopefully will be here next week or the week after. We'll start before she gets here or he, but anyway, we'll bring them all in. Okay, I'll send you an invitation, send an invitation.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you. Great idea. Thanks for, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, through the Councilman. Thank you very much for, gently firmly possible time reminding me.
We want to do a proclamation for this or not, or do we have to put something in the paper?
Does it? Um, we have a proclamation. I would have.
Typically, typically there's that annual year proclamation for volunteer appreciation.
Yeah.
All right. Well, can you get a motion to that effect?
I can move, uh, for volunteer appreciation. We have April 7th to 23rd. That will be proclamation made and this grant applied for 7th to 23rd, whatever I didn't just say.
24th to 30th.
Ground dates.
April 24th to 30th. Well, we haven't, we haven't discussed.
Specific week.
Yeah, like volunteer preaching week is April 24th to 30th.
I got April 7th to 23rd.
That's not a, that's not a week.
I, I believe it's at the end of the month. I'm not sure the exact day. Also, I, I.
That's what I just found on the website.
That's where I put that date. It says, this year, National Volunteer Week is April 24th to 30th, 2022. This year's theme is volunteering is empathy in action.
Yeah, it is a week and it's always at the end of the month. So I, I'm sure that.
So we weren't.
And I thought April 17th to 23rd.
What, is, is that just Google?
Um, National Volunteer Week occurs annually in the third week of April.
Is that national or the provincial?
Volunteer Week.
Good Canadian.
Yeah, this, what, what, uh, what we're looking at here is from Volunteer Alberta. So I, I feel like the Alberta one is going to probably be the more, I don't know. In my mind, it was always the last week of, of April and that's what this one's saying.
They're not going well today.
The one sent, let's see, what did I send? Go here.
I sent the link in February too.
Yeah. So this one was Alberta National Volunteer Week. And this one says April 24th to 30th. Yeah, okay.
And then we want the proclamation to go in the target that Thursday of that week.
The Thursday of that week or before?
The Thursday before.
Thursday before. And then we mentioned in that article that there will be an event upcoming to celebrate that?
Yeah, that's what we were talking about.
And recognition on the whiteboard. Did we cover it all?
You did.
So in my motion. Councilor Tracy Mussen.
All right. So, uh, state reports, state reports, uh, they will be done at the next meeting.
Next week, Your Worship.
At the council. Uh, any discussions from the gallery? I guess that would be useful.
From the gallery?
You're good.
Somewhere in the reading in the Warburg Bugle, I believe, there are, Warburg is having an appreciation of coffee and dough or something at the Pioneer Hall. So I'm not sure what date that is, but there is something in Warburg is happening. So you could check on that. It's in the Warburg Bugle, I believe, last week or somewhere. So if you don't want to have it the same day.
No.
They're having something. All right, thank you. And on the other note, uh, my wife sent me specifically to ask whether or not there is a line for the historical society for a budgetary grant of some money. Like normally in the past, the villagers go over, the town authorities has given some money to the historical society for operational expense every year. They raise from 10,000 to 15,000 to 8,000 or whatever. We're just wondering if anything has come up. I know you're doing it in the budgetary. No, I was just gonna say those, those meeting dates that you were talking about, the one that you're concerned with is the 24th. Ask us after the 24th.
Okay.
We haven't gotten that fair yet.
You know, I don't, if I, if I don't, if I come home and say I didn't ask the question, I'm. I asked the question. One last final thing is, um, some, some cases have been asking me, is there a summer employment program for the town?
Um, Your Worship, we put in the, uh, we put in the application to Canada summer jobs. We haven't heard back yet. We're waiting and we're hoping. That's, that's we can say at this point. We're kind of surprised actually that we haven't heard anything yet.
Because the universities are open the second week of April.
Yeah.
Depends which university you go to.
So we hope to hear something very soon, and when we do, we will
Yeah, Warburg's event is April thirtieth, so we're fine.
All right, so, so we do have, uh, a camera, maybe we will take a motion to, uh, a short recess, and then we'll come back to it.
Um, that we go take a short recess, you can have ten minutes if you like today.
All favor.
Here. What's in that water? I'm like, so we took the twenty-third, I mean, that sounds strange.
I have, I have one more tag after, but you can come in tomorrow to obviously with the Donna, but for Mercedes, because, sir, I, yeah, somehow have put the paper somewhere when I moved my desk today. And I just remembered after I get all that.
All right. All right, we'll work on that in my calendar, great.
Are you off the meeting?
Oh, the Zoom is off.
Phone is Easter weekend. Easter weekend is the one.